All right, so we're gonna start tonight's meeting. Monday, April 15th, 2024. Historic Preservation Board, our regular monthly meeting. Does anybody have any reasons to excuse themselves for tonight's meeting?
No, I do not.
No.
No.
I'll let your motion start, please. Okay, we'll take a motion to start the meeting from Chris.
I'll second.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
And member, what was it? Nope.
DeRozky.
DeRozky?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Motion backwards.
All right, so let's start with our first application on the agenda. 66 Monroe Ave. for a fountain.
Member Wong?
Yes.
So I'm not sure the format.
Yeah, you can see usually.
So I submitted the plans.
Just get over there a little bit more there.
Okay. So if everyone has the plans and pictures and all that good information. 66 Monroe Ave. has been there a long time. And there was a nice huddling pine tree.
Can you sit on that table?
I can sit over there.
You're not liking what's back there?
No, it's your water. It's your water.
Thank you.
So we took the pine tree down because it was leaning towards the building. And I'm the new owner, as of December. And so we want to make some improvements. And so this is sort of phase one, where actually we build this fountain. I've been building fountains for most of my life, except five years ago. We did, I'm in a house, I have one in front of my house, one inside the house, one back house. So this is something that I thought would be a nice addition to the building to make it interesting. And eventually, with further permission, which will be phase two, I'm gonna have a stream going down into the canal. So that's the concept of it. I have the stone detail on the, in the informational packet there as far as the type of stone, location of the water feature. It's gonna be about five foot tall. It'll be some pretty large stone. The limestone will be about 1,500 pounds. I have one big piece, and then smaller on top of that. And I think there are samples over there.
Yep. All right, so my question, well, my statement is, let's only discuss phase one because that's what the application is.
Yeah.
Okay. And so now that we have only phase one, I have two questions. And I guess they don't even really pertain to much of this board. But are you moving a curb of any way? This is just strictly on that piece of land that's right next door? And then where does it drainage do now? Is it just circulating?
Circulating. So it's just a pond, you're one foot deep, and it's just circulating pond?
I'm of the opinion this has no effect on a historic resource and is in landscaping edition that personally, I'd say was outside the scope of this board. So it's a nice addition.
It's a structure that's visible. I don't think, I'm not sure we've ever had a fountain.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Come before us, but if Steve says we're here, we're here. So I'm sorry. There are a lot of different stones here, and you have a brief description of what will be used where. Let me just run through this so then I can look. The, or it shows on your section view.
Right.
This, I love, I'm, I love these stone photos, by the way.
Thank you. I have a couple samples. It's a vertical stone. You just can have a block center, and then it's gonna be faced off with the outside stone that I have.
That's the South Fay.
That's right.
Quartzite, you see what it is? This is a small reproduction.
Not on wood, but they can get it on wood. That's a stone that's gonna be all set on the outside.
This image that you have superimposed, is that one that you already built like this?
I actually saw, I've done a lot of others, and I saw this one. It would be so cool in this area. So I took that exact model and basically, I moved it out, and then I'll photoshop it. So it looks like it's all done.
Very nice.
But then I put a stone in front of it.
Bill McBride here. I just want to be assured that there is no drainage at this point into the canal from the fountain.
Close system. In fact, in the future, when we do the canal, make it permission, even that water coming up is gonna surface separate from this part of it. So you're gonna have two closed surfaces, one through the fountain and one with the stream going down.
Okay, but there's a later application that you're gonna make for drainage into the canal, right?
That's the second phase. That's not, yeah, that's not. This is a closed, closed system.
Do we have any other questions?
Well, I, oh, here's the blue stone. It will be colorful.
Yeah, it will be. Yeah, it's really gonna be sharp.
Yeah, it sounds like this, without seeing color in your graphics.
I do have the actual catalog.
Oh, we have photographs of the pages. But I'm just, you, you didn't color in your snatch, Matt.
No, I didn't, I didn't color. I can recover this for a little bit.
Matt and I went to school.
That's yesterday.
Carolina, any questions online?
Nope. That's cool, I like it.
That's it.
Yes, please.
I like it.
Very good. All right, I'll second Chris's motion.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Member Miss Brown?
Yeah, yes.
Member DeRozky?
Yes.
Motion backwards.
All right, thank you very much. Are we ready to sign? Use the law.
All right, let's do finite facts. Finate and facts, this is obviously a new structure that is, meets our village guidelines.
I don't think we've gotten to the guidelines.
There was, what did I see in this guidelines? It had 210-26.4 general structures in criteria.
What's the page number?
I don't know the page number, I just have the code number.
210?
Yep. Also, and we're only approving phase one, just for the record. It was on there. All right, the next, next meeting item is 14 South Street.
Good evening.
Evening, good evening.
Good evening. I'm fine. I'm Louisa Pearson, or Louise Pearson, whichever you prefer. Thank you all. So I did some due diligence on all of you and checked you out to see what your qualifications were. And I'm very aggressive in terms of your background in historical preservation. So me, I need to tell, I need to say a little bit about me. I have lived in the village of Pittsburgh, I lived in Pittsburgh for the first 25 years of my marriage. Then we moved out to Victor where we built a house using historical, using historical materials to recreate something that was really pretty wonderful. We have, my husband's family has done that for a long time, and they're taking things apart, putting them back together. So historical preservation is extremely important to me. 10 years ago, we moved into a house at 14 South Street, and it is 1845. It's the date that it was built. So the roof is looking quite shabby. And because of my interest in the historical preservation, I contacted someone who is in preservation and asked what would be an appropriate material to put on the roof at this time. And the houses in 1845, I do have all this in your, in your letter, cover letter, in your head, tile or shake or metal. And I know that the village ordinance is that we, you need to replace asphalt with asphalt, but asphalt wasn't invented until 1903, which means my house would have fallen without a roof for 58 years. It must have had something on it. I could not find pictures to find out what that was due to, I have photographs from that era. But at any rate, I am requesting that I have permission to put a metal roof, standing seam metal roof on the house. There are photographs there, there are photographs of the work. I call the Lethem Art Society for recommendations as to who would do the best job for this. And so that's why I'm here, to seek your approval.
I, um.
Thank you.
I'm a registered, I was a registered architect in the state.
I'm in New York, yep.
Yes. This, the notion that just because metal was available at the time of construction for your home.
Yes.
Typically, a metal roof would have been on a, on a high-style house.
Right.
Not on a small house like yours. My very strong suspicion is that your house probably had wood shingles on it.
I would assume it did, and I agree with you.
And the New York State Office of Parks Recreation, Historic Preservation, in my work experience, stated that the nearest substitute modern material for a wood shingle is asphalt shingles.
Well, here's my other concern about that. I am very much involved in environmental concerns, and the runoff from asphalt is poisons our groundwater. And I know Pittsburgh has a huge initiative to try to eliminate as many possible poisons as possible. Metal does, metal's pure, and because it is, would have, could have been used at the time, not copper, I'm not asking for copper, but that definitely would have, is to your point, is for Thomas Jefferson's second thing. But I just hate the idea of water running off of poisoning our groundwater and what we all drink.
I've, I've never heard, I've never heard that, which doesn't mean it's not true. I've just have never heard it. The other objection I have to the modern standing seam metal roofing is that the material itself is very much different than the historic metal that would have been used, copper or turn. That was much thinner, the seams were much narrower. The, for standing seam, if your roof is more than about two, two-on-12, rise, two-inch rise in 12, standing seam is what would be appropriate even for a new copper roof. The pans are 10 feet long, they're lapped, so you see horizontal lines across it. The ribs of the seams are very narrow and they're very low. Only, well, I have my common sense handbook here, I can tell you exactly how high they're about, supposed to be, about an inch high. And the visual appearance, in my opinion, of modern metal roofing is not, is, is not close enough to historic metal roofing to be a substitute. So my opinion is, I do not think it's appropriate. I know there are other houses in the village that have standing seam roofing. I wasn't on the board when they were approved. I have not said aye to any of the applications that have come before us. So that's my position. I believe that modern metal roofing is not appropriate on a house of your age, the age that your house.
Jenny, I have a question for you. So you're saying you could not begin to match that historic metal?
In my opinion, no.
I know what your, I know what your son's gonna ask, and it's about the metal roof that he has on.
No, I gotta approve by this board, but that's not what I'm.
No, his hand's up in the air.
I was told.
Excuse me. This is a, this is a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. If you choose to accept comments from the audience, that's up to you, but it's not required of us.
Okay.
I was just asking if you'd start, you guys. I just have my hand up.
Yes, true.
The only thing I would say is that Jeanne France, when I was doing, yeah, no, Dr. Pearson, Mitchell Pearson III, 10 South Street. When we were doing our addition, Jeanne France, I'm sure you know very well.
I did know her.
Yeah. And so she, right, but she, I specifically called her about that, and she said, it's, she was disappointed that I was using asphalt on our addition, and why not take advantage of the time to put it all metal, which is what likely would have been on my section of town? I said, I'd love to do that. I've always wanted a copper roof. And she said, dear, you wouldn't in that side of town have been able to afford a copper metal roof. You would have used zinc. And the best use, the best current use or material that would be used would be the standing seam metal roof that we have right now that was meant to look zinc-like, I guess. Because zinc is terrible for the environment. And so that's the reason that she gave us, and she wanted us to use less asphalt. So I appreciate your opinion on it. You're somebody who I appreciated at the time, who gave us, you know, advice to stick with the metal roof that would have been more appropriate at the time. So I want, you know, in terms of what my mom asked, you know, when we talked about it, that's what I told her about what Jeanne said to me.
Well, I will, I loved Jeanne.
Yeah.
She's a great woman, very knowledgeable. I disagreed with her on things like this. She also said that vinyl siding is clavered the same as wood, wood clavered.
Yeah, she never does to me. She just told me about the roof.
No, I, I know. I'm just saying this is another example of where Jeanne and I would disagree.
But the issue, the issue of the runoff doesn't seem to bother you at all.
I'm unaware of this. You're the first person who's ever.
There was even in the proposal that I sent to you.
Well, I understand that, but I could not download my proposal, the packet. I had to pick it up today. So I have not had an opportunity to do any research, but I've been involved in residential construction and preservation.
I know your qualification.
For many years' homes, I'm, I'm not, not saying it for that reason. In probably 45 years of practicing architecture, I've never heard anything about asphalt runoff from roofs.
Well, okay.
First of all, we're within the framework of the Department of Interior's historic guidelines, which provide no carve-outs for environmental concerns.
But they do talk about materials to use.
Correct, but it's.
Metal for metal.
Censulary consideration, you know, if we were using material labors, material beings, which were both appropriate.
And asphalt's not appropriate to the time of the era. In secondary interior standards, it says very specifically about the materials used.
I mean, in all fairness, I mean, standing seam metal roofs came about as far of a deviation from asphalt roofs from the village.
But asphalt didn't exist.
To when they were, they were popularized for the first time. They came out about 1950. Asphalt was 1900, the house about 80.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, to argue with you, but actually, because metal roofs have been around since 1700.
Specifically standing seam metal roofs are not in the history of 1950s.
I would like to talk about wood, if you, if you made something else, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, be the, the word that's escaping, the.
Give me a hand.
Coordinate it?
No, no, not coordinate. Single seam? No.
Standing seam.
Standing seam.
That's what I'm going to.
No, not standing seam.
It's flat, single, standing seam.
I need to look up the guidelines, because I was researching it earlier today.
I guess if I could chime in here, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I think there's very little evidence that runoff from asphalt shingles has any environmental impact at all. Everything that I'm able to find online is from metal roofing companies. I, I would say that modern, I guess in my opinion, modern metal roofs look like modern metal roofs. They don't look like historical metal roofs. Whereas shingles have the aesthetic, the ability to have the aesthetic mimicking of historical wooden or slate roofs. Modern metal roofs don't look like historical metal roofs. So if we're concerned about the look and feel of our village, I, I think that modern metal roofs will be an eyesore. They, they don't look right. They look like modern, they look modern. They don't look historical.
I, I agree with you, thank you. That's, it's, we deal with visual aspects.
No, I understand, and nobody cares more about visual than I do. So I am not trying to do something that I feel would not be inappropriate or, or unaesthetic in terms of the integrity of the village, historical nature.
Yeah, what's the metal roof that you'd recommend? Because I have similar, my next thing is a similar roof style. So what metal roof would you recommend?
Well, if you want, if you want to replace an old metal roof with a new metal roof, you should replace it with the same material.
So I know, I'm saying, what would you recommend in terms of a metal roof? If you want to, I'm gonna do a shed, and it's the same sort of thing. If you want to have a metal roof, what would you recommend?
Well, for a shed, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put copper on.
I'm not, I'm talking about copper, I'm sorry. Metal roof, if you could replace metal with what?
Modern metal, well, on a shed, I would, I would put shingles. I would put asphalt shingles.
But no, unless you, so this is a bad word. But if you're trying to, if the thing that you want to do is to use the materials that were appropriate at the time, and asphalt didn't exist. So you have to assume that that's, then she, she, the one thing you would accept is a cedar roof. If you, if, whether you believe that asphalt's a problem or not.
Yes.
She does, I do. I don't want to use tar like we had at the Brown Field over on 75 Monroe Ave. So not using tar, not using any of that material. It's a product of it. So not using any of that material, the only thing you'll approve is a cedar shake? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, in my opinion, if you're asking my opinion, what my vote would be, my vote would be wood.
Okay. I'm just being clear about it. Because slate would not exist, as we both agree, on that side of town. No one would have had slate roof when they're putting together two-by-sixes and six-by-fours.
Not on a shed.
Not on anything, not on anything on that side of town.
There are, there are properties where, I'm sure sheds had slate roofs, but it's not in that.
I'm not talking about sheds, I'm talking about roofs in.
Or even, even housing, but not in that neighborhood.
Cedar shake is the only answer, if it's not asphalt.
If you're not gonna put on asphalt.
And so there's no metal roof that exists that you're okay with?
Not a modern steel.
No, 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 well, then what, what would you say, not a modern steel? So what?
It was suggested earlier, it was a modern roof.
The options that I'm familiar with at this point in time are copper or zinc-coated copper.
No, but style, I'm talking about the style. The material is metal, we agree on that.
Oh.
What's the style of roof that you'd be okay with?
If you're, if you're going to use metal, and the pitch of the roof you're on next, or this, this evening, right?
No, I'm talking about for her.
No, I know.
General.
Okay.
My house is next, and I have to replace my roof at some point.
For any roof that you want to put a metal roof on, an historically appropriate metal roof on, if the slope of the roof is more than two-inch rise on a 12-inch run, standing seam is what you use. Flat seam goes on flat surfaces or very low-slope surfaces. The seams are interlocking with solder in between to keep the water, to keep it watertight.
So if it's more than, so if it's a 12-by-12 pitch, it should be what kind of metal?
Standing seam, standing seam would be the configuration, and copper or zinc-coated copper. Lead-coated copper you can still get, but if you're worried about dangerous runoff, you don't want to use lead.
I think I'm not asking the right question, because that's not what is on the table right now?
You're not asking me about her, you're asking me about the shed.
I'm asking, I have a house that's very similar. I need to replace my roof too, so what I'm here, and you're, you're saying, it's like someone said that there was a metal roof you could put on, and that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of, on a house?
Not, in my opinion, no modern metal, no modern steel, Kynar-coated steel roofing. It does, steel's too rigid. You cannot form, you can't form the metal to match the light, lightness and form of those seams. They're very thin, they're not very high. Did I answer your question?
I don't. And I, I guess I'm asking, what, what's the name of that we can use? What's the name of the metal roof we can use? If you don't want, if we, you don't believe in the asphalt thing, that's why I'm, I'm not arguing that.
I'm only one more member.
No, I know, I know, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, but if I had a house, and I do think that it hurts the environment and the ground that, that the, all those little bits come off the roof, I think it does. I'm not trying to convince you otherwise. I'm saying, okay, metal, we agree, is the right, is a material that existed in 1845 or 1855 for me.
Yes.
What is the style of metal that I can tell the roofer to put on?
Style is, is visual. I think you're asking about metal content, what type of metal?
I'm asking about the style, specifically.
Standing seam.
So standing seam metal roof can be used as long as the seam is the right height?
Not, it depends on the application, it depends on the house. This applicant's house in a small, it's a small pre-civil war house in a neighborhood that was very much vernacular housing. There's, there would not have been a metal roof on there. The appropriate roof to put on it would be wood.
Okay, so there's no.
There's no appropriateness in, in putting a metal roof on this house.
Okay, now, I'm just.
No, no metal roofing is appropriate for this house.
Especially since it's had an asphalt shingle roof on it for so long, that that roof has become part of that.
We don't know how long that's.
Cutting vinyl, vinyl doesn't make it okay either.
We don't know how long that's.
Right, but we wouldn't replace it if vinyl, we would replace, replace the asphalt with asphalt, because that is.
But you got a vinyl siding on my house, and you wanted to replace it, you thought you would have to put vinyl siding back on?
No, that's, no, we wouldn't approve that either.
Well, you're. If you had vinyl, you'd approve vinyl. But you'd, maybe you'd allow tracks. You'd hardly, you'd allow hardy plank on this stuff, if you could cut it and paint it the way that you would, on siding. It's a different material that gives the same.
Hardy board?
What? Sorry?
You said tracks?
Not tracks, it's like that.
Hardy.
Hardy, yeah.
Hardy board, you did do that.
Hardy board, Hardy.
You said tracks.
I, I didn't mean to, I misspoke. But the, the hardy board that you can do, which is a new material that didn't exist, but because it has the effect, it looks appropriate to the time, and it cuts and it paints, and it does all those things, right?
I, I don't, I don't approve of hardy, hardy board either.
Okay.
And if you're worried about environmental issues, you need to look at hardy plank.
I'm not, I'm not.
I know you're not, I'm just.
Last thing is the last.
I know, I'm responding to his comment.
I didn't say it.
I'm responding to his comment.
So may I ask what I should do further to get your performance?
On what, metal?
Yeah, on the roof. Yeah. I mean, would you come out and, and look at the house and give me your architectural viewpoint as to exactly what kind of metal I should use on it, and I could?
I believe I've already done that. I don't think I need to go with you to meet on the property to, to tell you that I do not believe any metal roofing is appropriate for this house. But I'm only one person on the board. You have four other opportunities to convince somebody.
I'd be happy to.
Would you like?
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have any questions. My comments about metal roofing is the accent roofs, I think they look nice. We've approved multiple accent roofs, such as what your son has. There's a house on, on South, South Main, they put an addition on with an accent roof. That looks really nice. But as far as appropriateness, based on the design guidelines for our village, that, with what you have on your house, and the amount of time that you've had on it, excuse me, for the amount of time that it's been on your house, that I don't see there's a need or a reason that we would approve a metal roof. And if we did, I would need more information on the specific material, with measurements, and maybe more information on the runoff of asphalt. But I mean, every house and every, every house on our, not even just our village, but in almost the entire surrounding area, I know that metal roofs are becoming popular, but I don't believe it's for the, the runoff. I wouldn't cause that as a reason to vote for this.
Okay, but, so I can come back and present the information to you further?
If you would like to. If you would like to, if you know what's the table across. But it's tough, this is a.
Excuse me.
No.
Environment, environmental concerns are, and that's what she's.
I'm not asking for more information on the asphalt runoff, I'm asking for more detailed information on the roof that she would like us to review.
Okay, sorry, I.
And, and based on the information that you've shared as well.
I misunderstood what you were suggesting.
I suppose if she wants to come back, if I could just weigh in, sorry, if she wants to come back, if she can find a company that does metal roofs in a historically appropriate design, that don't have big fat seams and, you know, the, the modern look of the roofs, you know, I think that's going to probably be prohibitively expensive, but, you know, if there's some kind of historically appropriate metal roofing company that does that, I'm willing to hear it and look at it, but I'd want to see the specifics, I'd want to see a picture of what that's going to look like.
And it's not just the design, it's the materials also.
Yes, exactly, because the modern metal roofs have like a coating that looks very modern, and, yeah, I mean, they just don't look historically appropriate.
It's, the coating, as I understand it, the coating is the same thing that's on your car, yeah.
So it depends on the manufacturer and what you will come up with.
Typically, it's a Kynar coating.
Well, I know just what you're, what you're talking about, and that is a very poor look, it's almost plasticity, no, that's not what I didn't mean. So I will come back and bring more information to you.
And I would suggest Village of Pittsburgh Building Design Standards, page seventy, metal roofs. Okay, that's, that's what I'm basing all of my information, is the reading and writing of page seventy, Building Design Standards, that discuss the appropriateness of metal roofs in our village, and, and the areas that we do have metal roofs in this village, and none of them are on the residential homes, so I would refer you to that, and that's, again, she's one of five, I'm one of five, but that's where my opinion is coming from. I would just like to, because I've done the research, I don't know what the picture is, but on our blue sheet, it clearly states that in the Pittsburgh Scrapbook, it shows a picture from eighteen eighty-eight of your home, so if you wanted an idea of what material was, you'd best probably have been me. I don't know if we have a copy, it's on the blue sheet.
I, I believe there, there's a full set in the office here, I also know that there's a set in the library that you can check out, it's, Paul Spiegel did four or five, I can't remember how many Pittsburgh Scrapbooks.
There's a picture of metal roof on there, I feel like that changes my opinion.
Scrapbook two. There, volume two of the Scrapbooks, it says on the blue sheet.
Perfect, thank you.
And you have to ask at table.
Yeah, you will, yeah. Anybody got a table?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll move to table the application.
Second, the number.
Uh, member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres? To table?
To defer it?
To table, to table with.
Table it, yes.
Yes. Uh, member McBride?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Okay, next we have Ten Shane Place.
Thank you for saying it.
Uh, member Olson, can you just remind the gallery about public comment and speaking to the board and?
Uh, yeah, so in that instance, the public, the gentleman in the, in the red vest had a question, so I called on him and opened it up, and thank you for stating your name and your address, but we only say that this is not technically a public, not technically a public meeting, so it'll be based upon the board's decision to accept comments.
To continue, yeah. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Casey, I'm going to go along with the locker, we keep doing. So I'm here, Jenny Collins is here as well. We're specifically talking about the current process around town building that we put in. So we initially put this in, we love the jungle field, and we work that, the longer the cover, um, to the last year, the vehicles is trying to, kind of, chokes jungle gym, isn't that great? And even off hours, there's a lot of schools to come during the day when we're actually open, um, ten buses kind of, we just had such a bunch of children jumping up the road terrorizing, we could have an accident. So we started working to see, trying to figure out an alternative, um, we came up with a, taking woods, mid rail fence, patches, as, um, to help rebuild the one shot. And so I'm here today, this is going to be the city footprint, um, so we're going to have access for emergency vehicles, um, to, this, this, as well, we can give you protection, two weeks, more, replacing that, as well, woods, mid rail, pressure treated lumber.
Do you own the building, you own the property?
Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer, okay.
It's all over there, two or three feet?
Three feet, I believe it says in the application. I have a question, if you could, if you could clarify on your instrument survey map that came, I'm sorry, you're going to have to help me. I could go there, but.
No, it's all right.
I'm old and feeble. Where, here's the fence, see here, oh, sorry, well, here's the, here's the pavilion. Where is the property line for the Canal? The Canal Corporation? I don't have a yellow line.
Yeah, I didn't have that either, Jenny.
So that's the yellow line there.
So does it show here?
That I don't know, I, I, I'm looking at it upside down, but I'm not sure.
Shane, no, well, this is Shane Place, here's, here's the pavilion right here.
Yeah, so I, I don't know that it shows, I would assume.
Okay, it's on this one, but very faint.
Yeah.
It's this yellow line right there.
I, I get that, but this is not, this is not an instrument survey map.
So where's Aladdin's?
This is.
That's Aladdin's, Aladdin's?
Yeah, so we're, you're oriented.
Yep.
Shane Place is at your back, Shane, the canal is at your back.
Yep.
So here's the pavilion, this would be Aladdin's.
So my assumption then was, it, it runs along Aladdin's and starts to taper towards Ten, which is us.
Okay, but, but that's, there's, there's a line with, that, to me, looking at, being familiar with instrument survey maps, um, you have, you have a bearing and a distance. Typically, that's an indicator of a property line, so I don't have a problem with the fence. I think it's a great idea, I'm not sure you're not going to have kids climbing on it and falling off and whacking their head, but at least.
Of course, yeah.
You know.
It won't give way.
Yeah, you've got, you've got a little bit of, a little bit better situation, but I'm, I would be concerned if any of this was on the Canal Corporation property, although there's, the pavilion is, is newly constructed on it.
Yeah, we're not sure this, when the pavilion built, but.
I don't, I was on the board at that time, I was on the board at, at the time that the pavilion was built, and I don't recall seeing any instrument survey map, so I just want to clarify.
May I speak or not?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Jennifer Collins, property. At the time that we proposed the pavilion, Steve and I worked extensively for the Canal Corporation for the placement, so I don't know exactly which documents you're looking at at the moment, I have.
Instrument survey map, right here.
You know, probably twenty emails between Steve and the Canal Corp representative and himself that dictated, you know, the effects.
And the fence that was approved at the time, we're going to keep these applications, so that we.
It's, it's in the same location?
Same application, same.
You're not planning to change the footprint at all, you're going to use the same postholds, I guess?
Yeah, the only thing we'll have to do that, so it's currently constructed, as you walk towards the canal, the post we had there was movable in case an emergency vehicle had to come through, obviously, we can't make this movable, so it'll have to end a little bit shorter to be sure we leave enough room for emergency vehicles to get through, so it, it won't necessarily move, it just, the opening will be a little bit larger.
The, the sample, this is very light colored.
Yeah, it's just pressure-treated lumber.
Okay.
And the gentleman.
You're not going to stain it, or?
He said he can, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, the plan was just pressure-treated lumber, he did say that if it needs to be a certain color, then you could explore that, but the plan, we're not looking to, no, unless you're grassing.
Well, we're going to do that for at least a year.
Yeah.
Right.
And then it'll weather, you know.
I mean, it'll weather, it'll weather to gray within a year or so, anyway, right?
I'm going to touch on two of them.
I don't.
Are you ready for a motion?
Does anyone like to make a motion?
If we're ready.
You want to ask for one? Yeah. Motion to accept application as presented.
Second.
Number Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Aye.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you.
Ready?
You're my husband's.
Yes, plenty of facts.
My husband's new favorite place to go hang a gear.
Oh, my love. Perfect, that sounds great.
The fence is removable and consistent with our guidelines and increased usability of the space. And it will match the existing footprint. All right, Ten South Street?
It's not, there's no negative impact on the historic resource, no negative impact on the historic resource, it's a good one to.
Okay. Doesn't touch the.
Resources.
The historic resource is the streetscape.
Okay, so.
The only thing that might be unclear is the foundation, somebody asked me about the foundation, the foundation is actually just going to be the same way that I did with my mid rail fence, it's the, it's the four-by-fours that go into the dirt, which will just be, it's not dirt, it'll be a post hole with gravel, crust stone, the combination sort of sandwiching effect to keep the post up, and everything will be sitting on those posts, that they won't be seen, you won't be able to see it, but somebody asked me about what the foundation is, otherwise it'll look special, just like the picture that's on the top.
It's a very sharp shed.
Sharp shed.
Yeah, sharp shed.
Cool company, they'll bring it made if you, if you would answer.
So my question was of this image that you had in there with the shingle roofing, just, so let's define what you want.
I wanted metal roof, that's the thing I wanted.
Okay.
To be, like, to be taken from, the board and batten is because on the board and batten in my back of my house, we did our addition underneath the deck.
Yeah.
To cover the deck, uh, to cover just like a storage area underneath our deck, that's board, that was like a, um, a board and batten look to it, so I was just doing that, not that it's in the front, but it's just to sort of keep it, keeping, and sort of the same thing with the metal roof, with my metal roof, trying to keep it.
Right.
Sort of similar, but of course, I was thinking, it was going to be, I mean, I was asking them questions because eventually we have to replace our roof, so, yeah, that's the idea is also, as, there was a, there was a barn there in the, you can still hear it, jump on the right spot of the yard, where there's a foundation underneath, and I wanted it to be, it's not temporary, it's not temporary to shed or whatever, it's going to be an existing structure, but the reason I'm doing the post is because I don't like the fact that I can hear the, the old foundation.
The old foundation, so you're going to rip that up, or?
It's deep underneath, it's when they filled the canal, the Erie Canal, not the Barge Canal that you're looking at, the Erie Canal, and they filled it all in, they just use all, like, nothing stays in the, in our backyard, just, anytime, no matter how much rain there is, it just runs away, it's all back hill.
Have you ever thought about having a survey, like a archaeology survey?
We have a bunch of stuff, we've, I've actually called the Erie Canal Corporation, actually, on someone who had, owns the back part of the lot behind us.
Yeah.
We called them and said, we should be interested in coming and taking a look.
Yeah.
With Mr. Burley, when he was, he was pointing persons to that.
Can I just ask, um, on, on this page, I think it's page sixty-two, the blue highlighted areas where you plan to put the fence, I mean, the, the shed?
Oh, where it's going to exist, that the blue area, Steve wanted me to show where, where it would be located, so.
Yeah, so that's the location, I don't, I don't know if, like, on our property, we have like a fifteen-foot setback. You know, we can't build or put anything within fifteen feet of the property line.
Think for accessory structure, it'd need to be three or five for him.
Okay.
There are different zoning classifications in the village.
Yeah.
Correct? So different zoning classifications have different requirements.
Got it. Is the. That's really the only question I had. And I guess, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but the metal roof on a shed that isn't seen from the front doesn't bother me that much.
Uh, you'll, you'll, you'll see it, though, I mean, you'll see it if you're walking.
Yeah, you'll see the profile.
Yeah, you'll see it, it's, I mean, I, I wasn't pretending, it's not visible from the, the right way, but it is, definitely.
Or you'd see it from South Street?
It's, every aspect of it is, is wood. They were not going to paint it, at least initially, that was the plan, was not to paint it, it was just like gray, if you got a touch.
On your application form, you're calling your metal roof corrugated, and then in parentheses, you have standing seam.
I have examples of what they, but they, the way they refer to it, I'm just using their language, so if you were to talk to them, to make that, whatever the name of it is, there's examples of it, and I have examples of the color as well.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see any images of that, I'm looking at their.
It's a standing seam, it's a standing seam roof, it's a standing seam metal roof.
Okay, you, you know what a corrugated roof looks like?
I do know what corrugated, yeah, like, I just was at a house that had two barns with corrugated.
That's, you put on the barn or the chicken coop.
Yeah, right.
I think on page sixty-six.
I don't have numbers on our paper copies.
Oh, okay, it's the color one that says complete, pre-heat, thick. Upper left-hand corner, it's a colored picture. Looks like a metal roof to me.
She's pointing this out right here.
For, for reference, for those MDR accessory structures, three-foot sides, three-foot rear.
I'm sorry.
Three-foot setback, he's three-foot.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I guess I would feel, I would feel more confident about what I'm looking at as far as approval, if the manufacturer didn't call it a corrugated metal roof.
It's not corrugated, I mean, that's just the, it's just the area of the room, that's what they.
Well, here's, here's what I'm looking at in this picture.
I can show it, I can, I can get a picture of it.
You can include that as a picture.
Yeah.
Okay, because what I'm looking at here, modern standing seam roofs have, you have the panels, so I don't know how many varieties and widths there are, I know with copper, I don't know with modern metal. This, it's not a clear photograph, there's, there's shade on it, but in the areas where some sunlight is showing on here, this looks like there are vertical lines that are very close together. To me, that looks more like corrugated than standing seam, and I have not seen, because I have looked through catalogs of.
They come in sections, they come in, it all comes with a kit, so I, I mean, they come in sections that you have to put on top of.
Yeah, 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 they, they snap together, I, I'm familiar with the mechanics of how the modern metal roofs go.
Right.
I'm just pointing this out, it looks.
As well as the next, you flip it over?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it looks like there are, there are big panels, wider panels, that I think is this double line.
Yeah.
There's some areas, two, two double lines. That makes me think that there's in between, in between the main seams, there's going to be, it's going to go this, and then it's going to go this.
Yeah.
Not corrugated.
Right.
No.
But it's not gonna be smooth between the seams.
It should be smooth between the main. It'll be like a flat surface between.
Flat the main seams and then flat in between.
Yeah.
This, what I'm saying is even this one, you see there, there are double lines there? You need my glasses?
Yeah, I do.
These are, see, these are double lines here.
Yeah.
And these are single lines. I'm just looking at the representation because you don't have a material.
Well, that, yeah, I think that that's, but that, so these in between, it's not gonna be like when you pull out the sheet and you bend it and you bend it and then you put out the standing seam, these come as a kit.
I, no, I get that, but what I'm getting at is that the-
It's not being made like on a site, you know?
I know. Corrugated is like the, sorry, I don't hit my drinking tools.
Which is what I'm afraid is gonna show up.
This is-
Yeah, if you said, I mean, if it's gonna-
There're gonna be lines like this, and if you cut through this and looked at it, there would be, it's hard to draw, it's down, there's gonna be a seam here where one piece locks onto the other, like that, and then-
These will be, these seams, where it connects, is gonna be thicker than the in-between ones.
I get that, but instead of being smooth like this until the next one-
No, it won't be.
I think-
It'll be, you're right, it'll go, it's gonna go, so this, like, from here will be the thing, and then, and then it comes like this, and then the next one comes on top of it.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a section.
Okay, that's what I mean, but I'm concerned that the section is gonna look like this with like a V-shaped crimp in it, because I think that's-
Well, maybe, I don't know, I can't speak to that, whether it's gonna be more of a V. It's not gonna be this. This is what I can, this is like corrugated.
Right.
It's not gonna be corrugated.
I would be, I got, I'm okay with the metal roof on this, it's a brand-new structure, it's at the back of the yard, it's not very visible. My concern is giving approval for a material, we don't really know what it's gonna look like.
Yeah.
If standard, a standard standing seam roof bothers anything, you miss twelve-inch spacings between the seams, and it's flat.
That's not the only way it comes, Steve, that's not, that's not the only way. And houses are gonna be that way.
It's gonna have, it's gonna be, there's no question that it's, it's gonna be made to look that way on a cheaper level because it's a shed. It's not gonna be the way that my, the front, like, my torches. That, they made there and did it on the site.
Yes.
It's not gonna be that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, there goes. I do not feel comfortable giving an approval, knowing what the material for the roof looks like.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Would you give the approval that it be, that you, so I can come in and show you the, I can show Steve that it's the right material instead of waiting on a little two-month?
You have to show it to the board, because we're the one who gives the approval, not Steve.
Right, but we can make an approval with an exception based on the correct material.
But what if he can't get the correct material?
Then I don't know.
He's not approved.
He's not approved. I'm just trying to work towards the goals.
This is coming as a kit, right? Oh, it's coming, it's coming as a kit, you're gonna put it together.
Well, it comes in, all the pieces are already pre-cut, basically. There's a bunch of cut kits made, but not that particular thing is, um, you know, I mean- Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Get a sample.
But I just wanted, I think this went down, I'm hoping what you were saying is that if there's a way to get a yes, as long as that works, and if it doesn't, I'm happy that if Steve says it's not right, I'll do that.
Well, yeah, and if it's not right, you could have already ordered the shed because no one has any issues with the shed or the location of it. And if the metal roof is wrong on it, then you can buy the correct metal roof for it. Or return the roof.
I, definitely, definitely.
Yeah. Anybody online? Any questions?
Nope.
Nope. You can't give Steve any approval. You can't destroy a roof.
Right, yeah.
And then who do I get to, then who do I go to, you go to-
Then at that point, it's either Steve or you, so it's not what you described.
Or, I mean, I'm-
I do have a question, actually. I mean, it looks like you have an option of, with the kit, of either a metal roof or, I don't know what this red one is on this other page. I don't know if it's asphalt or what it is, but there's like a red shingled-looking thing.
There's definitely shingles, there's, I mean, that, if the, I'm happy with sending the picture around, if you guys give it a down vote, I'll come back and do the-
No, my question is, I mean, if you're just really dead-set on having the metal roof, or, I mean, I'd be happy to approve it today if you go with the red option.
Are you-
The shingled option.
Are you looking at the image with the shed, where the shed is natural wood and there look like shingles on it?
Yeah, red shingles.
Well, those are, I, those to me look like wood shingles, but-
Yeah, they look-
I think that's what she was saying. She said if you want to get-
All I'm saying is that, you know, without seeing what the metal roof looks like, we're gonna delay an approval, whereas if you're willing to go with the shingle option, I'm ready to approve it. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not sure you's-
Well, it's just, I mean, I know it doesn't, you guys can't think of this. I've sat in your seat, so it's difficult, I know that sitting in your seat is a difficult thing to do, and so I appreciate that, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. But in my seat, I do have to think about the cost of it, so I prefer to be able to do the metal, and if there's a way that I can show that the metals make sense to you guys, however that can be done without having to wait a full month to do it. Because I don't, I'm not, you know, having the time is the biggest issue.
Right.
The cedar shake will cost as much as the entire kit, it doubles the cost.
Oh, I see.
So for me, I know you guys can't think of that, so I'm not asking you to, I'm just, I can't think about that. That is a, it's a difficult thing.
May I ask a question?
Yes. She's part of 10 South Street, that's my wife.
She's part of the other company.
Believe me, she's part of it. She only has to approve if she approves.
If I can pull up their website and give you the information-
Yeah, so-
At the end of this.
We can table it, we can look at it, we can find it.
Well, I mean, like, right now?
That's what I'm saying, do you wanna look it up? Do you have any ability right now?
Wait, everybody else can go ahead, we can table it or come back to it, or no?
How does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can wait, you can wait for the word, or you can-
All right.
I can join the activity.
Cool, yeah.
Okay.
If you can describe the roof to where you want it.
That's what I was gonna say, too. Is a standard standing seam roof, is, but you can get a picture of the roof.
Let's see.
Okay.
Sorry, so we didn't, you need to say table it, or?
Okay. All right, so let's go to the next one, to the arborum, directional signs.
Ah, he goes project it.
I do it.
Yes.
Very good.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Ben Sattich, I'm a junior at Brighton High School, and I've been a member of the Dallas Street 19 since the three. I am now the senior leader in the management department, and I currently take on the ambitious Eagle project for the Village of Free. I will be building and installing weight-bearing trail signs at the intersections of the trails. And they will be made from pressure-treated one-by-six fours that you can use. The direction of the corners up forty-five degrees in the direction of trail trail lines. Trail names will be engraved in the signs to increase the lifespan, and the posts will be stuck to the ground securely. Signs will be attached by two to three service crewed at three inches long. And the posts are eight-foot pressure-treated bigger posts.
Very nice.
Are you going, you said that the text will be engraved?
Yes.
Will you paint it or put any coloring in it so that it's a little more immediately legible?
It'll, I'll burn it then, that way.
Pardon me?
I'll burn it then.
Oh, good, then it'll be dark. Okay, yeah, yeah.
The day I last saw her, the paint was broken.
How many signs do you have to do?
Uh, sixteen.
Wow.
Yeah.
The three O. As an Eagle Scout, I have a comment, not a question, but make sure you don't do all the work, you're overdoing it.
Yeah, my side of it is just making the signs, and then the rest of the board and that will be, for example, will be digging holes in the posts and putting the signs up, and that'll be basic.
When are you gonna do it?
Uh, hopefully before the school year ends.
Right. Any questions online?
So the only thing on the signs are the trail names and the arrows, right?
Yes. And give an example-ish.
Yeah.
We have a second call.
I'll make a motion to approve this application as presented.
Second motion.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
It's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
To sign in the box.
I wish everybody would introduce themselves.
To sign in the box.
The way-making signs will enhance the use of the arborum. They will be unobtrusive, made of natural materials, appropriate for the natural setting. They represent no negative impact on the resource.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, thirty-one North Main Street.
That would be made, would be made, Steve, sir, too. I've been in, yeah, Sir Jersey is much better with the details, everyone, and I'm, he said, this is efficient. That's Mr. Jersey, Jim Jersey. You are a- I, Steve, sir, to my wife, I'm Marily, own thirty-one North Main Street. The background of the building, we bought the building in August of two thousand and four. Every time we bought it, it was hair salon. I can't get the entrance in the front, I have a picture of that, I'm not sure I've been into it.
Oh, yeah, it's in the picture.
Yeah, and so that was Richard Crusain, he's his direction, he's been in the show. He had a hair salon, the building was kinda tired, had a green awning and an election sign. One was directed to the park behind the building, where we have ten spots that are beavers, keep that in mind. When we did buy the building, we did a set of a lot of work inside to make a locker room. And we took those on a park downstairs, we converted all that to commercial locker room space for curators. We did take down the awning because it was old, tired, and slightly, at the request, I think it was, I might get his name wrong. His first name was Skip. Did you know my name was, what was it? Skip, but he came down one day and he said that the village hated the directional sign. And it was actually kind of crass, it was a big hang. So we just took it down, and it was just property, it was an old rural park, we spent a lot of time, we took it down. The years go on, we're children, we're building our law practice. There's a gentleman who cuts multiple lawns in the Village, he was a nice guy. And there was a storm door on that door, that front door. And one day, he knocked, apologetically, he blew a lock through the storm door. So again, as a lawyer, against the laws, I was just, I didn't know, I just said, okay, so we lost somebody in. They said you can't replace the storm door, the side, the door size, and they said, yeah, the jams, the jams are not normal. We said the good news is, is that you can never get locked out of your building. So we did, and we took his finger and we put it through what was just a wood door, and it was rotten. And that was on like a Tuesday.
That was your actual front door?
That was our front door, it was a rotted, blue wood door.
Yeah.
And I learned back when this first came to the board about side lights, I had no idea. And the guy who, who worked as my son's football coach at the time, juniors, and he put the, this door in, that I then was called before, it was one storm door, maybe one storm door. And we had only one side, which is not architecturally accurate as I learned. But I was told that zero side lights or two side lights would be architecturally accurate. It was expensive, and we never came to a conclusion. We had since our practice all over to the Garden of Blue Law School, starting in the fall, to the NLS and the NTRL, we had an opportunity to buy a building, unfortunately, outside of that, which was much too public. And now we had a building, we were building on my lawyer, right next to Marsh Plaza. My signs, your first face bigger than my shoes. It's not worth the cost for it. So we were there, and we had some ideas, whether we were gonna keep or sell the building, maybe make it into an apartment, it'd be a great place for someone who wanted to walk along the village, but the apartment was in the shop. Somebody offered us, they made an operating contract, so we were in due diligence phase of the process. We're hoping we had Robert's Kitchen, not the Robert who owned it for a long time. This other guy named Robert, Bob Gerato. He came over, I told him what the issues were, zero side lights, two side lights, we only have one, we'd love to rectify. And we know that the light that you see above the door, that was always there. That door frame really, I don't remember it too much. That, like, we've done nothing to the exterior, other than when a car drove through it on Camber Lake November night, and it was in the left part of our building, we were able to get siding, because it was siding, apparently by Richard, in the dark of the night. So we were approved for siding, but we've done nothing to the outside of that building. So that light appeared that way in the time we bought. In a perfect world, we loved, we had a rendition, and I'll let Mr. Jersey Jim talk about it, if there's any questions, I don't know the details. There's a rendition we have, we can have a door that has zero side lights. We don't use that door as an entrance, because that leads right to Marily's office. The side door has always been the entrance for that building. I don't know what the new proposal owner wants to do with the building. I was kind of out of the loop on that, I was, uh, reviewing on you though. So we're hoping that we can put a door in that is in that drawing, that has zero side lights. Since two thousand seventeen, I was told that would be okay, and that it was historically, so that's what we made.
In, when you say in that drawing, the biggest thing for me reviewing this was understanding what you're asking for. Because this drawing is different than this drawing, is different than the- Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Wait, I can't, I can't hold my glass, I believe the one to the right you're looking at, which was, that is the one that is the proposal I believe that Mr. Gerato submitted.
Okay, this is what we're looking to at tonight?
That's what I wanted to say, I'm trying to get this first closed.
So the one, MD twenty, from Barrel Architecture is different.
That, that, that was years ago.
It's existing.
Okay.
There's a-
This is what he's referring to, the light, the side light. Okay.
That's, well-
I just wanted to hear what they understood.
I would like, it was right to your right hand, and right there is the one that Mr. Gerato over at Robert's Kitchen looked at the door size, I know that, the door size is unique, I remember how, but it was always, that was the problem. We couldn't get at a reasonable cost a storm door-
Yeah.
Because of the size of that, so I just, I, yeah, I understand we have to, maybe, we're happy to center the door like it was when we went in the rock went through it, we'd be happy to center the door, and that's what we're hoping to accomplish.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, the official Steve.
The official, yes. I've heard it.
My recollection is that the use was driving the width of the door.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
So, without knowing what the use is for the building, if it's a, if it's a public building, it's gonna need a wider door, a public access building, it needs a wider door than if it's a residence.
I don't know, I don't think the buyer is making it a residence.
Okay.
I don't think it's solely for Arrow, I don't think it's solely for a residence.
Uh, I think it is, it was an apartment, I think it is. There was an apartment upstairs when we first bought it, it was like this, it wasn't too grand, it was a two-family. It actually started as a bar, and the days, and all the first story, then upstairs, there were rooms.
I think the room she said called it a saloon.
Yeah. Actually, remember when she stopped in, they opened a new paper store in his deposit? Her grandmother was a bartender there, at some point.
Sure you didn't mean the hotel Stephanie?
I don't even know.
I'm Stephanie's, I only get a drink there once.
When you're too young, when you're in there. This is, I mean, it was a, it was a back with the Erie, I'm just, they used to drag the horses there.
And the other one I wanna say, this was approved at one point for a different door with hatches and everything, because that's what Barrel came as a design. But what Steve, what they- But what Steve, what they had done originally, when he changed the door out, there was no headpiece on it. So, he came in with a fancier design, but because of the cost and everything, I mean, you approved it. But the reality, if you're replacing a kind, the headpiece was an add-on, it wasn't what he discovered. Originally, what he discovered was a door with two tiny side lights with no headpiece on it. So, what he's proposing now is to take that door, center it, and just put solid side, which you actually approved.
Right.
The solid sides of it with.
Well, I remember, I remember this very well.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you were actually very specific on some of the dimensions on it. But what I'm saying is, the headpiece that was approved, that should not be a requirement, because it wasn't there when he changed it.
Thanks. I think that was positive. So, I love you, just, excuse my voice a little hurt, but, um, I just, you know, got involved with this about three weeks ago. When you explained, uh, what you wanted to do and a little bit of the history. But really, I'm here to listen and help Mr. Cerquie through this process. And, um, so, I know the technical issues during the model, so to the extent that we can talk those through. Hopefully, this is from the residential, my understanding is that you would like to replace in the existing opening. It has the metal flashing around the tile side, the opening. And do something that's appropriate up there.
And Mr. Gerardo would be keen that the, the, the economical to do in the way with the no side lights.
I, I believe that this exact, uh, illustration was approved already for this building. My concern with this particular application is that there are no dimensions for, uh, the width of the pilasters. You know, what the, what the chamber size is gonna be, that sort of thing. And I think that makes it a little, little skimpy on the details. That would be my opinion.
It's just the opening's four feet. So, through the drawing, I, which is, it was, drawn, or, looks to be less than three feet. Because those side, uh, areas, off-trim, therapy, wide than six inches.
Well, my understanding was that the need for, uh, an appropriate with, for a public building was, was driving the design on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the site well enough.
So, you're not gonna use the existing door that's on the building?
No, because we can, uh, I was, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a strip. We have this strip.
Star fresh, okay.
It's bad, because I said before, it's a bluff, we got, we stopped and said, we love this. I figured what was in trial, but I understand the historical accuracy.
Dimension issue was there. But to finish, I think for a very simple opening, modest building.
Yeah.
And with a three-foot wide door, you end up with six inches on either side, you could do a simple flat trim, I think.
If you want to do some.
Remove that all right, that's not.
We don't care about color.
If, if you want to work with him to propose a different configuration, I mean, that, that's up to you two.
I don't like, well, we.
But if we're, but if we're looking at this, this is what we're, if this is what's before us, this is what we have to react to.
But yes, I think I'd like to, I'm hoping that that will meet the needs.
All I, all I would ask for is some dimensions on it.
Are there dimensions that would satisfy me, just, just so I can tell Rob, he's on vacation, he's meeting his friends.
Well, you know, you've got a, you've got a three-foot door, then you've got a space, then you've got a pilaster, then you've got another.
Just for a trim.
Yeah. Yeah. Just because proportionally, this looks good.
Right.
Maybe if this is gonna take a six inch or, or a, I don't, looking at it, I think maybe a four inch would be too small. But the only way we have any control over what goes in is to have dimensions on the drawing. Jim understands this.
Yeah. Would it be, okay, so would we, we have to wait till May to start the pot, to start the job? Or can we submit those dimensions in the next couple of days, and you guys hit it up here, or May?
If, if we can pull together a special meeting?
Yeah.
Great.
If, if it's, is it holding up the sale?
Uh, it is contingent upon that for the, for the sale.
I'm, I'm re, I'm retired, I can come almost anytime.
My three kids want to leave law school, actually, same as you.
Okay, so if you get those drawings to Steve, Steve will work our board when you receive it. And then we'll try and put together a date that works for the five of us and schedule it with you.
All right, and I, I don't want to answer this question, maybe I should, is there, um, is there, you tell me the dimensions, I need to be, and I'll tell Rob. It's gotta be, I mean, it can't be two inches, it can't be twelve.
Yeah, I hear your ass, and. It was four feet.
You're not gonna do something different, just put the numbers up.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, it's a whole good project.
Yeah. So, this, uh, this motion, motion table?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent, thank you, Renata, we'll do that.
Good evening.
Take care, Jim. Take care, let us stay cool.
Uh, member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member DeBroski?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Thank you, member McBride?
Yes.
L O R. L O R, for limited purpose, residential. Which is a little sliver. Okay, uh, 10 South Street? We got, did you guys? I, I don't really get the pictures, so the commerce, and I don't want to keep anything open, so we'll, we can do the cedar shape, that's, and that could be approved all the way. Well, is there a, a standing seam that Virginia, you are okay with, that we can approve as that dimension? As described by Virginia. Because I'm saying, because if I'm going off.
My objection to what I'm seeing is that it appears that there, that it's not planned.
What you said, yeah, I appreciate what you said, and that, I don't, the last thing I want is for it to show up, and even though, and it's two people talking about, I say standing seam, and they're like, well, you use the term, you know, or whatever. And it says, yeah, corrugated, right, right. And it's, the way I described it, I sent a picture of my roof and said, this is what it looks like, it's like, well, it's not gonna look exactly like that, but it, it is meant, meant to mimic it. I don't want to go down the road of, well, I don't think it mimics it. So, if that's the case, I'd like to get it done by the time my kids end up graduating from college, and we're having a party for it. And so, I'd rather, you be the dog out, just pay for the extra, no, it's for a man, but. Okay, so, you think you can get that information by the time? I, I'd rather just, I'd rather just do the cedar shape. I appreciate it, I really do, I appreciate it.
If you can get it by the time we're here.
I don't want that special painting, I, walking into the building is, is not, difficult enough for me as it is, so I'd like to, uh, just, I'd like to amend it and make it a cedar shape, and, because that's what you.
Hey, guys?
Philly, Virginia. Okay, but, but, you, you collectively, I don't need to be specific.
I can take the heat.
I don't know, I'm not needing to be, I'm just saying, I'd like to be done with it, and we'll do the cedar shape so that it can be.
Hey, guys?
Yes.
Uh, so I went online, and I'm on their webpage, um, I don't, I don't know if you guys did it there too, but I think if you show Ginny the picture, it, it looks like the right, I mean, it does not look like, you know, a, a rounded corrugated roof.
I'm not talking about. Corrugated, they put sort of a V crest. I, I've looked.
I think you're probably right.
I've looked at the catalogs, I, I know what, what they tend to look like. What's the, what's the website address?
I can, I can clear this.
Jamaica Cottage Shop.
Okay.
We went on a computer and looked, every single picture showed a corrugated roof, not a standing seam roof. Every picture. We went through, we, we just went on my computer and looked, and then everyone's a corrugated roof.
They're all, like, the ones that are there, it's, I don't think this is one that they're descending, but the, they're all like a V. They're not gonna be like a standing seam, it's not gonna look the same thing as a standing seam roof. I, this is, it, it's meant to look like, as, as we all know, that when somebody's doing that, they're trying to sell a thing and whatever. I just don't want to have to do this again. Yeah, so, I'll pay the extra and figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
No, it doesn't look that bad to me, but you also have asphalt chingles as an option.
No, not for me.
Let me just. Let me just put out here again, if he's changing it to cedar, wood, wood roofing. Uh, do we need to discuss this any further, or can we just make a motion and, and go for it?
Will you make a motion and go for it?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the shed at top 10 South Street. With the condition that, instead of the proposed corrugated black metal roofing, the roofing will be wood shingles.
Second motion.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member DeBroski?
Aye.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Those are classes.
And I do, I do thank you guys, I've been in your spot, and it's not an easy job. Thank you.
Um, findings of fact, this is an accessory structure. It's at the rear of the property. The materials and design are, are appropriate for the.
Okay. Five salon, there's the information only.
Um, so, members of the board, thanks for hearing us tonight.
Sure.
So, we're here from, um, kind of redirecting the zoning board that we went into, they said we become, as an informational meeting, and kind of go for the, we can do, and see if you guys had input for us, next step, so.
This, excuse me, this requires a variance, Steve?
Pardon?
Does this, does this shed require a variance? He said he's been to zone, okay.
Uh, yeah, for, it's a garage, shed's being removed.
Oh, I'm sorry, the front porch, I'm looking at the front porch.
There's a front porch?
Oh, yeah, there's two pieces of garage. And technically a third with a domino.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Wow, it's a little shed.
I know, that'll still, I don't, we just want to make sure that it's, everything's.
It's old and relevant in there, I guess. If it's old and nice. Okay, I didn't consider that, yeah. So, generally, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the factors that everyone should have, I think. So, why don't we just, uh, we'll start with the garage, and just, so what we're trying to do, ours is one of the few houses that doesn't have a garage, I'm just trying to, you just like, like, put our garage there. You know, have covered parking, and safety, turn around and all that stuff. So, we got a single driveway, but kind of hatch two-pack garage, and then have a little bit more capability to move cars around, and then also park and cover the parking. So, um, I guess the question was really, you know, is it, design-wise, like, is this kind of meet with your tools? We picked a plan here, we haven't had the architect design, but we kind of kept, like, what we were thinking about. And starting to see if it's nice standards, the, the feedback from the zoning board was that, uh, to address some lighting on, on the building, and I guess, what we'd like to do, we didn't have, we couldn't draw an info, have some pictures of lighting. I guess they were recommending some, kind of like, I don't know, can I show you some pictures?
Sure, although, yeah, those would be details for next time.
Yes, when we actually come in, yeah. So, okay, so you don't want to know?
It's up to them.
I mean, and. It's just, just, I mean, this is what they were kind of telling us, it's only more, maybe, scoot back type lighting, slow, under seventy-five watts, so.
Like, what do you want? Do you want two in the bay, or? Two of them timed over each, or two total?
Two total on the front.
One over each bed?
Probably, yeah.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
My, my, there's a house on.
Uh, twenty-six point four, but it's no, we don't, uh, we still don't have a, a plan for our house, so like, we don't, we think, from doing a visual measurement, that is about, it's less than the house, or regula, or less than the house. Um, we can bring it down a little bit, if that's a concern, uh, but this is kind of like a plan that we just kind of picked.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough to tell comparatively, it just seems imposing.
Yeah.
We also, the corner of our lot is open to, um, I don't know, should we do it?
Yes, yes.
Which is kind of.
Happy to, uh, separate your property.
Yes.
My, my comment is that the slope of the roof on this image that you provided is very steep. The slope of the roof on your house is much lower.
Challenging.
In, in my, my opinion, the slope of the garage roof should be the same. If you need, they're height, because you're gonna use the upper space, I see there are stairs, so you can use the upstairs.
So we can stand up.
Well.
And you look out at the main points.
That's the nocturnal one, that's what we want.
I, I get that, if you, if you want it to be that high, then you can raise the walls, raise the walls, and lower the slope.
Okay.
Because this is, this is very, this is a steep roof. They're, in architecture, they're low, moderate, steep, this is a steep roof. Your house is almost a low slope.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it would be, in my opinion, it would be inappropriate to have such a steep roof on the garage. I understand you wanting to be able to use the second floor, I don't have a problem with that. The other comment I have is that none of the, none of the windows on the front of the house are paired, and you're showing paired windows upstairs.
Okay.
So, if you're, also, if you're lowering the slope of the roof, you're gonna have more wall space, you can separate the windows.
Okay.
You can separate the windows.
Make more of a system.
Have two single windows instead of two windows that are paired. Otherwise, I, I understand, the house I lived in on Lincoln Avenue for twenty years, never had a garage.
Yeah.
Used to have a garage, and I knew exactly where it was, because the foundation, uh, had been, they had just dug the foundation out a few inches, and in the summer, when it got hot, the concrete in the ground would heat up, and the grass would die.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, that's the information, so you want to know some of that, if you want to ask.
Yep, this is great, I have.
The video is recorded on our website too, we need to go back.
Oh, that's good, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Of course, you have to fast forward through.
Yeah. The information that we needed.
Yeah, no, this is why we're here in the United States.
So, there's two, two styles of garages that come to mind. Um, one of them is on Church Street. It is thirty and thirty-two, it's a side-by-side house. They have a, a really nice shed garage that you have kind of proposed here, with the same lighting that you want. Um, their upstairs is a little shorter, I don't think they have enough that you'd like, put an office up there or something like that, if you guys, is that what you said, you wanted to work up there, or walk out there?
I just want to be able to stand up, like.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Except for storage, or.
Like a gym, or. Yeah. So, there, that one's a little shallower, um, and it's smaller as compared to the house. But then also on your street, it might be sixteen Sutherland, if I can get.
Seventeen.
Is it seventeen?
Kind of the wider one on the second floor.
Yeah, it's this, it, it's, it's the, is this one?
Yep, yeah, we've seen that one too.
Yeah, so that's on your street.
Yes.
This is, this is nice, I've been in that carriage house before.
Yeah.
And it, I guess what we're trying to say is, is the height of that house, and then compared to the barn in the back, or garage, or whatever you guys want to call this, is a good, like, ratio, size-wise. You don't want this to be too much, you don't want it to be taller than your house, and you want it to, and you don't want it to be identical either.
Yeah.
If you guys built a, 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 um, a barn that looked exactly like your house, the review board would also, would say it's just too identical. So, it needs to complement in a way, and I believe that this style really does complement in a way.
We want a single door there.
Oh, a single garage door?
Single garage door.
Okay. It would, all, all I would say is, what you want, present that.
Okay.
Don't show us this and then build and say, oh, it's a garage door. Yeah, right, even if the light is the same, so what you show with measurements, yeah.
Bring in a cut sheet of the garage door.
Yeah.
A single cut sheet for the window. I'm, I hate it when applicants get. I'm, I hate it when applicants get a handout from the window manufacturer and we've got thirteen pages of every single window, every single size, every single shape.
It's pretty huge, yeah.
Yeah, well, and the village pays for printing all this, it should match the house.
Well, so, well, my, I'm. Does that kind of look like, would you do some wooden or?
That would work, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna contradict his comment. When a garage and a house were built at the same time, my house, the garage is just like the house. Matches the house, exactly, detached.
Right, but is this a garage or is this a barn?
This is a garage, it's got a garage door on the front, of course it's a garage.
I, you could also.
Big shingles, like.
Well, we'll go to the next guy.
Now, the neigh, the neighbor in the, in the blockhouse next door, I mean, the block, that garage is very, is very similar to the house.
Okay, I don't know, so, so.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the site, your site plan here, and I'm looking at the portion of the house to the garage and the, the horizontal to the vertical map, well, the sides, I don't know how to describe this. The width, side to side.
Yeah.
Is proportional, the width to the length, width to the length, I think are quite nicely proportioned compared to the house.
That's what we're trying.
And I think that matching the siding, matching the roof slope, matching the window type is gonna make it look like.
A detached garage.
A detached garage.
I understand what you're saying, yep.
Actually, it's also smaller for the house too, you can save dollars.
Mm-hmm. Because the lot slopes.
Just slightly, it's not much, but, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna miss it, but it's also, it also looks like despite the fact that we're looking at a drawing of what it's gonna look like without anything in front of it, the house is going to block more than half. If you're standing right in front of the house, the house is gonna block a little more than half of the garage.
Great, that's great, good, thank you.
I just wanna get back to the siding though, uh, so could we do smaller, like shingles or wooden battening on maybe the top half or?
I agree, that'd be total a bunch.
Because.
I have seen shingles with a quarter bat garage myself, I think it looks nice.
Yeah, I mean, our.
It gives it a barn appeal.
Yeah.
It's not a park, it's a freaking garage.
You can do whatever I call, it's a.
This is more than a deck structure.
This is sort of a space.
It's, it's also.
It's a structure on the property, if you want it to look a certain way, you can have to maintain a structure.
But, well, now it's a little different.
As long as it's within the design guidelines.
Well, I grew up in twenty-five hundred acres, so it's about sixty.
Well.
Oh, the garage.
I mean, we don't have a blue sheet, I have no idea what old the house is, I mean.
The house is in the fifties.
Nice and fifties?
Yeah, this is a modern house.
And so, um, it was designed apparently as two families, but moving on to that, I guess.
So these are just little porch, nice one, yeah, can we move on to the porch?
I'm, I'm cool porch.
Are you?
I am also.
I don't have any, how deep is it gonna be?
Uh, it's gonna be exactly the same thing as for the address, we're not gonna come on any further, but I believe it's, uh, it'll be exactly nine feet.
Is it wide enough? Yeah, I was just gonna say, you need it to be wide enough that you can have a chair out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's nine feet. Have a, have a slight line of command.
I, I did the porch, but what about the Dover, that's new as well, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, yes, uh, because, you know, obviously you have two sliding doors.
Well, we're trying to keep it character, I guess when I was reading up on, you know, the preservation, that front door over the sidewalk leading to the main street on Sutherland is in character, and it was, that's kinda why we were trying to have that. And this, this picture that I did, like, I couldn't find like a sidewalk, but I think we made it to match the other sidewalk, I think, not this, uh, you know, right.
Regular concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, concrete sidewalk, kinda going to the other side, meeting the other side. It was, it's kinda like.
Well, the, the other thing about a barn work is that it's, this, this house is a newer house, the, the carriage barn that's down at the corner of church in, in South Street.
Yeah.
Is, looks like a carriage barn and, and Carolinas, is it Carolina or Carolina? Carolina's house.
Carolina.
The one that was proposed.
Yeah.
Is appropriate for that, for the age of that house, when they would've had a horse in the barn. So to put a barn behind a house of this era isn't, in my opinion, isn't appropriate.
I just also go to the guidelines where, you know, we're not trying to trick the eye into giving the illusion that that is an existing structure for one house to build. And if we're trying to match it.
Well, you don't, you don't want, you don't want to, also, where's, where's that piece of paper?
That I just gave you?
Thank you, all these guys, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
Do not create false history. To make a barn, to put the garage back there that you're trying to make it look like a barn is creating a sense of false history.
Not a thing, not a thing.
Because nobody was using, was.
I don't think that's false history if they weren't a barn, if that's what they're requesting.
Well, to make it look like an old-style barn.
Yeah.
Um, new barns have regular size.
So.
Paige, oh, go ahead.
So just, and then the other thing you would think, so on the left side, if you're looking in front of the house, the left side would wrap around the existing doors, as I said in that one picture.
Mm-hmm.
And then the right, we're kinda either, would it matter to keep that or take it away? If you guys have a preference, like, or is it, doesn't matter, whatever.
Keep or move what?
This side or? This third picture, the whole concrete stuff, we said we're gonna get rid of it.
I think it's more of a headache for you to remove it.
That is kind of what we're thinking.
This guy?
They created like the.
Well, this is, how else, is there a back door? How are you gonna get into the house?
There is a back door, and then we're proposing the front door, so there are clearly, you know, so there's three, there's four doors.
Right, but I, this is.
There's two of them.
This is a different side.
That's the left side.
Yes, I know.
And it's just.
And that's, that's over here.
Correct. And then add a door here.
Yes.
And now, and there's a door on down the right side.
But I'm just asking, when you get out of that attached garage, how are you, what door are you gonna use to get in the house?
Trouble.
The side door that's on the driveway, that's, thank you, that's, that's what I was trying to elicit.
If we're in the garage, you know, we could probably maybe call the back door, but you're right, if, even, if you were in the garage, you might go to the side door, something.
But if you, if you've got groceries, you're gonna stop at the store, take the groceries in, put the car in the garage.
And I'm happy with the front side, without the rail, it kinda like straight open, so it's, I can sit all the way along.
And it's low enough.
It does not, it's, the porch is low enough that you don't need a railing.
Yeah.
And I think it's fine. Because this is a nineteen fifty's house.
Yeah. And what about lighting on the porch, you specifically that, like, or, you know, we would kinda think maybe twenty inside the door and wanna peel it.
Yeah, you'll want some, but bring in, bring in cut sheets of what you wanna use, photographs of what you wanna use or cut sheets.
So basically that.
Do you have, um, what about size at the side of the house? Do you have a preference on how high out we can go? What porch do you have a tank side of the house or?
And there would be, there would be, that's where my, it's about there.
So that, that is part of the primary structure, I wanna leave, I think it's fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet.
I think it'll probably.
No, I can't, sorry, I can't read that.
I think that the normal.
There are dimensions here, but I can't read them.
Yeah. The steps that we have there, these, you know, but I think I can't read them.
Are you, are you going to, uh, clear the vegetation?
Yes.
On this side?
Oh, you didn't notice, yeah, photographs, new vegetation?
Okay.
Yeah, why, yeah, I know.
No, I, I, it's, it's.
Yeah, 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 good, good vegetation. You're, you're gonna need a machete.
Yeah.
And what about the, um, materials for the porch floor? Do you wish or can you use, um, modern, track style, like?
No, tracks, um, I don't have it.
Has to be.
We have to be performing, performing or something.
Yeah.
And you've got a plenty of education on roofing tonight, so.
Yes. We'll digest it and make sure it's appropriate, whatever.
Um, as far as that group, because I listened to you saying it's gonna be a very gradual roof.
Mm-hmm.
Can it be, that, in our street, on the other side, there's quite a few metal type roofs, and you said porch roofs, um.
And the son, Trip, he has, he's on South Street, ten South Street, he has a metal porch roof, very shallow, sloped roof.
Yeah.
But it's standing scene, yeah.
As long as it's.
And then, yeah.
So do you have, or, cause I'm seeing these popping up quite a bit, and obviously clearly there's a lot of, um, interest in these roofs. Do you have a brand that you're seeing that, and I know the other roofs that have been already?
Modern, modern metal you're talking about?
Yeah, like on Sutherland Street, um, in particular, there's other roofs, like the brands that they have, and they could allow or?
There's not so much a brand, I, I would encourage you to think about the look, you know, like, if you just get some cheap metal, that probably isn't, you know, you want that to be an action.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so it would, okay, we'll bring some plans if we have to. Okay, everything for you?
So, so it'd be the demolition, the new garage, the porch, and the new door. There's a lot to approve, and so I just wanna make sure you have, like, if you are trying to get this done in, in a quick amount of time, there is a lot to consider.
Make sure you have all, make sure you have all, all the measurements, like the door, make sure it's centered, easy.
So at this point, we should get the architects involved, they have the door off the case.
Yeah.
Just to want to do that in this situation.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
We're just, but I'm wanting to make sure we're on the right page, man. Um, I'm sorry, you, you just mentioned something, like, uh, the door is centered, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, I was just like, I wouldn't leave anything to question you.
The garage door, you mean?
No, this is my door.
The door is centered between the two and the.
On the front porch?
Yeah.
Which is just like a weird look, because like your windows are so inconsistent.
It should, actually, it should line up with the window above.
Yeah, which I believe is centered there, yeah.
Well, it's hard to tell from here.
It looks like the door is not centered under the window.
Yes, that's the way it shows right now.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
General area.
Is, is there, is there enough room in the entry, at that entry door, to move it over?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that's a big ask to have somebody move an entire door, the, the house is the way it is, right?
No, it's not, that's a new door, on the front elevation.
Yeah, it's a new door.
That's a new door.
It's a new door, yeah.
Oh, I see, that, that's, that door isn't there right now?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, sorry, apologies, I misunderstood. I thought, I didn't realize they were asking for a new, a new door to be cut, just, uh, just the porch. Yeah, I would definitely center the door below the window.
We can do that, yeah. Okay, and then just from a demolition standpoint, is it just like, I mean, if I talk to the architects, they're just gonna swing, move the shit, you're gonna do shit.
Well, so what you would do is you'd wanna bring in pictures of the existing shed and place reasons on why you believe it needs to be demolished.
We were doing it because of the imperious surface of the, of the zone, you guys.
It has a story, you, you have to have historical, architectural, historical basis for it.
Okay. It's, I don't think it's, yeah, is it technically considered historical because of the village?
Yeah, any structure in a village.
We have, we review all demolitions.
Okay, so we'll bring pictures and just say, hey, you move them.
Can we move it?
No, we won't before we.
Could you, could you move it?
Can we move it to another side?
Um, what happened with that one, when the house in the garage, did we offer to move that and she didn't wanna move it, or how, how did that?
I mean, yeah.
Thirty-five grand, is that what you're talking about?
I don't, I don't, her garage touches that corner of her house, they can't get through the backyard. Did we offer to move that?
They, they have a plan.
And they don't wanna move it?
Everybody ran plays.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of other times where we may have offered to move it.
Okay.
They're not, they're not, restructured now.
That's what I thought.
Well, with that garage, it was really stupid.
Yeah.
The condition on the house and.
It butted up to it.
Oh, it butted up, yeah.
To give you an idea, a recent application that we did to demolish was, I wouldn't think they went and looked at the, they were looking at.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Here's my energy with the position, I can't really. To demolish it.
Yeah, so we have to give a parent for a second, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, that'd be another parent, so they'd be part of.
No, that would be technically, if, if there's any history of when they had shut and ran it.
Yeah.
I mean, that may not be.
It's a, it's a, it's a desert. It's, it seems pretty, pretty newer.
What's the floor? Is this a wood floor?
Yeah, okay, all right, well, thank you very much, great feedback, and thank you for your time.
Did we get a clear answer on the twenty-six point four foot height? Just so I remember, that was one of the concerns of the PCBA for you guys.
Yeah, so, well, I think after the feedback here, what we'll do is we'll probably have the architect design a, a less slant roof, uh, so we'll probably, so I think that ultimately we'll go a little bit.
As long as they're, as long as they're primary structure, that's fine, they're, they're gonna be over the twelve foot base on the width of the, the unit and lawn and walk height, but as long as they're under the primary height of the primary building, yeah, it's within the color.
Okay, well, great.
So we'll have the next.
Oh, uh, what's up?
Yeah, I can talk to you guys, oh, no, we have a couple of member things, maybe we can talk tomorrow and see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
We, we both, I appreciate you too, yeah, appreciate it. Eight days, I appreciate it, all right.
Do you have minutes tonight, are there, are there members here?
Ten minutes, next one, yeah. I know, I know.
All right, so Virginia?
I wanna bring up the fence at forty-fourth Sutherland Street. Um, I spoke to Jeff about this before the meeting, to clarify for me. On a lot that's on a corner that has two front yards, where does that front yard stop and become backyard? Because I think what happened with that application was, because the fence was starting at the rear line, the rear line of the house, then from the rear line of the house to the property line is then backyard, even if it's in front of the side of the house at Sutherland Street. You want me to sketch this?
Um, yeah, so, here's, here is, uh, Sutherland, right?
Yep.
And this is Lincoln?
Lincoln, yeah.
And this is, let's call this the house structure right here?
Yep.
Okay. What you're asking.
And this is front.
This is the front yard, and this is the front yard, correct? And this is their property line?
Yes.
In the back? Oh, is this it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So, let me turn it the way you have it. Sutherland, Lincoln.
Yep.
Okay, so where, this is the front yard.
Correct.
And this is the front yard.
Correct.
The front yard here doesn't stop at the corner of house. So why does the front yard stop on this side of the house at this point?
It doesn't, it's just behind the front of the house.
So my point is, a fence in the front yard can only be three feet high, so we approved this.
This is front yard, this is backyard.
It's side yard.
Side yard.
It's side yard.
This is front yard, because this house has, okay, so why?
Because the corner of the house defines.
Yeah.
That, that is the defining line of every house in this neighborhood. The, every house in the village has that, that process, and so would it be the same thing over here? Because that's front yard, this becomes side yard, this is front yard.
What, what is this yard? Over here, is this side yard?
That would still be front, technically, because their address is over here.
Okay, but why, I don't.
According to, to Jeff, when we checked, there, in any corner lot, there's two front yards.
I know that.
That's what Virginia's saying.
That's what I'm saying, so what precludes from here to here from being front yard? Because it's still.
The house, the house itself. So, Virginia, let's think of it this way, if this turned into a side yard, say this wasn't a corner street.
Yeah.
And this was the front yard, what, what Steve is saying is that you could, you would be able to put a fence right here up to that, up to that line, which we did on, um, Jefferson Road, in a white house with a porch on the front. We did it to the right side of their house, and then we did it on Elm that comes off the front of his gar, off of his garage, right here on Elm Street, with the white fence, he, he has a, a six-foot fence right here off the front of his house like that. So if this is your front yard, and then again, if this is also your front yard, this, this exact fence would then transition to right here and go right there.
I don't.
You could look at it as front yard this way, you could look at it as front yard this way.
It's the way we define every one of the buildings.
I want, I want.
For consistency.
I, this fence is hideous. It's, it's, it's way too tall for that size.
Six foot tall. Six foot tall, it's on the corner, it's on the sidewalk.
It meets the code.
Jeff?
I'm asking Jeff for an interpretation.
I know, it means.
You're the lawyer.
No, he's not, he's not the code officer.
Okay, I, I think that's a.
On the yard front, an open, an open, unhappy red space, extending full width of the lot, between the front building line and the front lot.
Front building line and front lot line.
Front building line, this is the front lot line.
Yes.
This is the front lot line.
So where, where would you put that fence?